We good? So, good evening. My name is Rob Cagnetta. This is a meeting of the South Kingstown Rhode Island Zoning Board of Review. Members tonight are Thomas Daniels, Bill Rosen, Arlene Hicks, and Bill McDonald. Also present are Amy Goins, South Kingstown Special Legal Counsel, Jamie Gorman, South Kingstown Building and Zoning Official, and Jessica Spence, Administrative Support Associate. The board is made up of eight people with five regular voting members and minimum of four members must be present to vote. In the event that a regular member is absent or recused, an alternate will step in like tonight. No more than five members are entitled to vote, and at least three voting members are needed to grant the requested relief. Tonight, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Hicks, and Mr. McDonald. Applicants are here for either a dimensional or use variance or a special use permit. The board is a quasi-judicial body recreated by the South Kingstown Ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless you get carried away, and it is deemed to be not relevant, but so for the interest, rather, of the time, please be brief and on point. We do our best not to argue and keep things civil, and we try to start our last petition before 10 o'clock. After we introduce your petition, please step up to the microphone, adjust as necessary. Clearly, well, hit the red button when the red button is on, as well as on the microphone itself. It is live. If multiple folks of us have the microphone at the same time, it starts to reverb, so we might ask you to kind of turn it off. Clearly state and spell your name for the record. You'll then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. After that, you can present your petition with any witnesses to testify in support of the application. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone with questions in support of or opposition to, the petition can step up to the microphone. You will identify yourself, be sworn in, and present your testimony with follow-up questions from the board. Please do not direct questions or comments to the petitioner or any other witnesses. The board will direct questions to the petitioner or any witnesses after the comment period. So after hearing all the testimony, board members will discuss the application and the evidence presented. Board members will ask a lot of questions, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules for us to follow per the South Kingstown Ordinance. So you must give testimony that supports certain facts to allow the request to be approved. Tonight, we're doing dimensional variances and one special use permit. For a dimensional variance, you must present evidence that your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure, but is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Your hardship is not the result of any prior on your part, prior action on your part, and that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Your hardship by the denial of the variance will, oh, and for that your hardship by the denial of the variance will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. That means the relief sought to minimally, is minimal to reasonably enjoy the permitted use of the property. Special use permit must be presented the following. The request is specifically authorized by the ordinance. So somewhere in the zoning ordinance, it has to be authorized, or we don't have the power to grant it. The request meets all criteria in the zoning ordinance, and that authorizes such special use, and the request will not alter the general characteristic of the center around surrounding area, nor will it impair the purpose or the intent of the zoning ordinance. And so you know also, all the information that we received, that the zoning office has received, will be entered into the record. So just be sure, anything that was given prior to this meeting will be in the record. So, is there anything we have to review prior to getting started? So there was a request to kind of move around the agenda a little bit based on some other obligations. So we're going to hear the fourth one first. The petition of Ann Rabinewitz Danzig of 962 Post Road, South Kingstown, 02879. It's for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, that the applicant is seeking to construct front and rear additions to the single-family dwelling. The additions will be located 20 feet from the side property line. Required yard setback is 40 feet, therefore a relief of 20 feet is requested. Lot size is 2.26 acres. And a dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and Section 907 Standards of Relief. Sort of the owner of the property is Ann Rabinewitz, Rabinewitz, excuse me, Danzig, for premises located at 962 Post Road, South Kingstown, Assessors Map 75-2, Lot 5, and is zoned R80. Good evening.
Who requests this go first?
It was, it was one of the witnesses, I think, that has to leave early, so they asked if we can move it up. Is that, is that, you're not prepared to move up, or? Oh, okay. So if you want. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you want me to, do you want me to put it off for one of them, and we'll hear the first one first? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. So, all right. So hopefully you're there soon. So next, we're here the petition of Matthew Brown and Frida Sahady of 254 Robinson Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879. They're looking for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to allow alcohol service at the proposed restaurant. Lot size is .4 acres. A special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 301, 02, and is zoned CD. Good evening. Good, how you guys doing? Just state your name, spell it, please, and. Yep.
Matthew Brown, M.A.T.T.H.E.W.B.R.O.W.N.
Thank God we'll swear both of you guys.
Frida Sahady, F.R.E.I.D.A.S.A.H.A.D.Y.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Excellent. So you guys are an existing restaurant, and you're looking to add alcohol. So tell us what you'd like to do.
So we're looking to open a small wine bar, tapas, small plates, sort of, not, nothing crazy, just for dinner only. More or less, it's for storage. Our landlord presented us with the space that used to be Cowabunga, and we've kind of outgrown our space now already, so we're looking for, because we don't have a basement or anything, so we're just looking for more storage, and at the same time, opening up a small, small plates, tiny restaurant.
You expand, well, you're essentially expanding from next door, but it's a new site, so it's considered a new site, correct?
Yeah, it would be a different concept, new restaurant. It would be something completely different from Persilane.
Okay.
Under the same LLC, though.
Under the same LLC, I see, okay. Okay, so it's, this is under a separate property, of course.
This would be treated separately, and the alcohol license would be separate as well?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Sorry to confuse it. So, so, all right, anything you wanted to tell us about the layout or anything like that? Is there, like, expected hours, or?
Hours would be five to 10, maybe five to nine during the week, five to 10 Friday and Saturday night. Really depends on what kind of business, but five to 10 would be what we're shooting for.
Okay.
In terms of seats, we had 29 inside and then eight outdoor seating.
So just to be clear, I think Cowabunga originally had, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that space, but they had seating on both sides. We would only be seating on one side of the restaurant. The other side would be all kitchen, storage, office area.
And is there those four tables outside, too, on that porch?
Yes.
Okay. And access, obviously, by the ramp on the east side there?
Yep.
There's stairs that goes directly straight up, and then there's a ramp on the other side as well.
And so serving alcohol out there as well?
Yes.
Board members, questions for the applicants? Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The menu that you've included here is a proposed menu, is that what that is?
Yes. I mean, it's the first, first draft of our menu that we probably won't build off of.
So you're not, you're not currently serving alcohol, is that correct?
No.
In your present, present location?
No.
Okay. So this is, this is a new, a new request for a special use permit?
Right.
Okay. Secondly, what is your protocol for dealing with outside people that are consuming alcohol in terms of people walking by, maybe under rage, maybe somebody buying a beer or drink inside, handing it over to someone outside? What is your protocol to police that?
All of our servers are tip-certified, and they would, they would know better whether to, I mean, there will be a server on the patio that would be able to regulate that. There shouldn't really be any issues with people coming up. We're pretty strict on keeping the public out of our patio.
One at a time.
Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I pretty much said what I said, but.
I was just saying, there's always eyes on the customer, not only just for policing reasons, but because we all want to make sure that everyone's taken care of. So there's always somebody walking by. There's, there's never like a time where it's an extended period of time where people will be left alone.
And your bar area will be inside?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Service area outside, or drinks will be brought from inside to outside? How's that going to work?
It would be all brought from inside to outside. So server, I mean, the servers will have complete control of the situation.
Okay. How many seats outside again?
Nah, we have eight.
Okay. Are they high tops, or regular tables, or?
Probably two regular, or four regular, two top tables.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other board members' questions? Mr. Rosen?
What's the name of this going to be? Just a snack bar?
No, sorry, we had, we had submitted this before. We had literally locked down a name, but we're thinking St. Charbel.
So this is going to be different than Persilane?
Yes.
Yeah.
And are there going to be customers that go from this snack bar to Persilane?
Um.
I mean, maybe once they've, once they've paid their check at St. Charbel. It's going to be a different business, so it won't be.
It's going to be a separate business.
Yeah, there won't be people bringing, like, you won't be allowed to bring a drink from St. Charbel over to Persilane. You won't be able to bring food from St. Charbel over to Persilane. It's two totally separate.
Okay. Do you presently have an alcohol license at Persilane?
Yes.
Yeah. What level is that? Can you only have beer and wine there?
Uh, it's a full liquor license.
It's a full liquor license, and this will be a full liquor license as well?
Yep.
We hope, yeah.
What was my other question? I'll.
Any other questions, board members?
Just one more.
Sure, Mr. Daniels.
This will be a transfer of that license? Is that, is that what's going to happen?
No.
It's a new license?
Yes.
And you give up the old one, or what happens? It stays with the property? What happens with it?
This is a new license.
If I could just clarify, so this is, this is a new establishment. There was formerly a juice bar, a cafe there, but this is a new establishment, so there'll be a new business license as well as a liquor license. I think we're confusing it because they own a neighboring restaurant on the same lot.
Right.
But this is a separate altogether.
So what happens to the license that's attached to the other property at this point? Does it go away?
No, it's a separate license that's active with, with that establishment, Persilane.
Okay.
And you know that zoning approvals run with the land. Liquor license transfers to different entities require town council approval.
How about music? Are you planning on having, like, patio music or anything like that electrified?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Maybe in the future, but not.
Not outside.
Oh, not outside, no.
Okay, good, okay. Okay, any other questions? Sure, Ms. Hicks?
Just very quickly, going back to Mr. Daniels' concern, where you have the liquor license and you have outdoor seating at Persilane, have you experienced any problems, such as the types he mentioned, with people sitting outside and?
No.
Having a drink with their dinner?
No.
No, okay.
No issues at all.
Okay, good, thank you.
Nobody sneaking in ice cream?
Just ice cream kids.
Ice cream, we let that slide.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
There's a separate kitchen here.
Yeah, there'll be a separate kitchen, smaller, and we're not getting a herd, there's no cooking equipment, it's just pretty much raw bar items.
So it's not, it's not a full kitchen?
No, it won't be a full kitchen.
Okay. You have a full kitchen at Persilane. You also have a mobile kitchen outside Persilane, or do you still have that?
No, we sold that.
You sold that?
Yep.
So you're doing, all you're serving in Persilane itself, you're not going to serve from Persilane to this snack bar?
No.
Okay, so you're going to just use the facilities that you have at this snack bar?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daniels? Go ahead. Yep, go for it.
All right, in order to approve this special use permit, you have to meet certain criteria, I think you understand that. Tell me about parking. What is the parking situation there? Is it on street? Is it off-street?
So we have the parking lot behind us, which is owned by Wayne, our landlord, and then there's, I mean, people park on the street, people park across Main Street in the public lots.
So the parking lot behind you is available to your customers?
Yes.
Okay. Tell me about where you intend to accompany trash and deliveries?
So all pretty much going to the, we're pretty much just taking over what Cowabunga was doing before, so we'll be using the same trash, stuff to go recycling, we have our compost bin down there, and then our, our oil bin, that's pretty much what we're both using.
All right. Utilities are in place, or will be in place?
Yeah, everything's in place.
Signs, any signs?
Uh, yeah, we'll be applying for signage permit once we get in touch with our signage guy and our, our designer, and we'll go through the system for that as well.
Okay. Okay, those are requirements under a special use permit, so we want to get that testimony on the record.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. McDonald? You good?
I guess the only question I had was just to confirm, there'll be no commingling of the bar servers between Persilane and this new restaurant? They'll be all bifurcated between the two restaurants?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're, this is separate. There's no, there's no intermittent intermingling at all.
Okay.
Like, are you saying like the employees, or, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, if I go to your restaurant here, will I also be served from the people at Persilane as well coming over to serve you?
No. Like, somebody may work at one place one day and another place another, but not, not on the same shift, yeah.
And the only reason I brought that up is just so there's no confusion about the outside alcohol who's bringing, you know.
Right, no, alcohol's not going to cross the driveway.
Right, and if you can, and if you run this like you do at Persilane, I think it's going to be a huge success, and I know, you know, there's never been, as far as I'm aware, when I've been around there, any issues with parking or that, so, you know, I look forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone else? Everybody else good? Anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Pretty much it.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
No, thank you for what you guys do at Persilane, it's delicious, so.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, we'll see if anybody out there is concerned about this. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of this petition, for or against? No? All right, any discussion by board members? Any concerns?
No, this seems pretty straightforward. They have a good business at Persilane, and I assume they'll do a good job here.
Absolutely, okay. Somebody want to make a motion, or? Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a motion to approve the special use permit of Matthew Brown and Frida Sahady, I hope I'm saying, hope I'm saying it right, for a restaurant with alcohol. The owner of the property is Main and Robinson, Robinson LLC, premises at 254 Robinson Street in South Kingstown. The chairman has read the application into the record and has read the, has read the appropriate documents with this application into the record. The board finds that the, the following individuals spoke at the hearing, Matthew Brown and Frida Sahady, the applicants, no one spoke in opposition. Board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by this ordinance, because in order for liquor and restaurant service to, to go forward to the council for licensing, a zoning application approval is required, and that's, that's why the folks are here. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection of the ordinance, once again, because the applicant testified to a number of issues that are consistent with approval of a special use permit. The board finds that the granting of a special use permit will not alter the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town of South Kingstown. In doing so, the board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions have been made or will be made concerning the following issues. Off-street parking was discussed, there will be a parking lot behind the building, and this is, this, this particular location is consistent with the surrounding area because it is an area of, of small restaurants on our, one of our commercial streets here in South Kingstown. The applicant has testified that trash, storage, and delivery areas will be similar to what they have now in an existing restaurant, and will not change to any demonstrable degree. Utilities are in place, and they will be set to go forward without the need to add additional utilities. They will, they have testified that they will apply for a proper sign, structure at some point with the building official, and certainly general, again, once again, general compatibility is the same as the abutting zone. This is a commercial district, and there are several restaurants in the area, so there's nothing new with the, the type of structure and the type of business that will be present. And there is no conditions that the board would establish on this applicant, and therefore I would move that we approve.
Motion was made by Mr. Daniels. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rosen. Any other discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Daniels? Mr. Rosen? Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Aye, motion passes. Good luck. Do I have to read it all in again? I should, okay. So this is the petition of Ann Rabinewitz Danzig of 962 Post Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a front and rear addition to the single-family dwelling. The additions will be located 20 feet from the side property line. The required side yard setback is 40 feet, therefore a relief of 20 feet is requested. Lot size is 2.26 acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and Section 907 are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Ann Rabinewitz Danzig, for premises located at 962 Post Road, South Kingstown, Assessors Map 75-2, Lot 5, and is zoned R80. So, good evening once again.
Good evening, thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. So introduce yourselves, please.
My name is Sanford J. Resnick, I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant in this matter, and I have a few things I do want to say before I introduce my first witness, Ed, Edward Pimentel, who's been here before, and it might be easier right now if we just ask, you accept him as an expert witness?
Yes, Mr. Pimentel has presented previously under this board and has been recognized as an expert.
So what we're requesting today is a dimensional variance, a single dimensional variance, but there's a little background here that I'd like to be able to just go through briefly. So this property was purchased in 2021, and in 2021, she engaged Robert Graham, who is an architect who is registered in the state of Rhode Island, state of Connecticut, and the state of New York. And if we all remember, how can we forget, this was COVID, so everything was kind of delayed in their process. So they did go and start getting their permits, they did the boundary survey, they made their application for an island department environmental management, they received their DEM permit, and started working on this and going through the application process, starting in December, everything was submitted, and submitted in a timely manner, and you know, it goes to all of the various departments before the building permit is approved. The building permit was approved, and that was in February of 2005. The work started early March, started doing the work, ordering necessary materials, hiring the builder, and someone made an inquiry in the area, what's going on? They, the building department checked their records and found a problem. Unfortunate problem. So we had a little collateral damage because of COVID, and now we have a real problem because the work was started, and obviously no fault of my own, my clients, and it's one of those things, if you understand how difficult it is for us even, as attorneys, even to find the latest, the updates and the statutes, you can understand how this thing done. So we researched and talked to your attorneys, and obviously, we, we need to come here for a dimensional relief. So we're here for dimensional relief, and just keep in mind, when they bought this house, they bought this house, she bought this house, with the intent to expand it to meet her family needs. And we're here because we think that we meet all the requirements of the law, and we're going to try to make this simple and ask for dimensional relief. So I've asked Ed, let me just ask Ed, you're familiar with the application? I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think he's a lawyer sometimes.
I do. For the, for the record, that's Edward Pimentel, P.S. and Paul, I.M.E.N.T.E.L. Would it be helpful, I mean, Mr. Gorman, could you help just sort of paint this for us a little bit? It sounds like that they had gotten an approved permit, which then later we discovered was not appropriate based to the changes of the setbacks. So just explain your, like, just what kind of happened in, for the towns.
It was accurate, what Attorney Resnick mentioned, so the building department received the application, worked with the contractor on plan review, issued the building permit. I can't recall how many weeks passed since issuance before. Property owner came in inquiring about the construction activities taking place. We reviewed the site plan with them, and at that point, we determined there was a 20-foot setback on the plan where the required setback was 40. So we immediately, that day, reached out to the contractor, as well as the architect, and advised them that the work needs to stop until this can be strayed now as to the path of, it seemed like there was really two options, changing the plan or obtaining, I don't know, applying for dimensional variance. At that point, I believe there was just siding that had been stripped, but, you know, that was probably, well, two months ago now, at least.
And it was, the permit was approved in February of this month, of this year?
I can confirm that, if you give me a minute.
Is that, is that what you mentioned? I think you mentioned this February 7th. Okay, okay, so work had begun, plans are set, contractors lined up, and materials ordered.
Purchased.
Purchased, even worse.
Thank you.
And, okay, so, so, and this was all being developed under a previous rule that
And, okay, so, so, and this was all being developed under a previous rule that the town was operating under, which had changed during the time of planning to the approval.
Yeah, and I think this is probably maybe more than the board really needs to know in terms of the application, but just so the board understands the full context, you'll remember with the laws that have been changing every year, substandard lots are entitled to reduce setbacks, so if you have less lot area than required for your zoning district, the law previously was setbacks are reduced proportionally by the same proportion that the lot is undersized to the required minimum area. But last year, as of, I want to say June 24th or 25th, they changed the method to calculate it. Now, it's if the lot is undersized, you take the setbacks from another zoning district in which the lot would be conforming. So, they changed the rules of the game, and that's why I think it was overlooked.
So, this, I guess we're going to find out, the size of this lot relative to the adjacent lots, this is, this is a substandard lot for, for this area, or no? This is, so what made it change from 20 to 40? Because it is.
Was that method of instead of, and that change, I think, had the effect of sometimes increasing the setbacks from what they would have been more dramatically or drastically rolled back, you know, for very undersized lots.
Okay, so, does that make sense to the board members? All right, so now you're going to tell us why, or get.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the conclusion was as to the 20-foot, at one time was the appropriate setback for this property, and now it's 40 feet, the reality is the house was conforming under the old regulations, because the house is situated in that 20-foot side yard setback. What's kind of unique about this lot, and regardless of the history, I believe there's enough information here, if you read my report. I did my best to try to make as clear as I could and bring a visual of the property to this board in both written form and pictures, because when you're standing out there, it, it tells the whole story. The lot is really a bowling alley-shaped lot, so typical regulations, there's a width requirement of lot width to lot depth, and the reason for that is to, you have a perfectly rectangle lot, this is more of a bowling alley-shaped lot. So, the lot is actually longer and narrower, so it loses a portion already of its building envelope. That was more than made up from the fact that there were only 20-foot side yard setbacks. With a 40-foot, it, literally, the 40-foot setback, the building envelope cuts through the middle of the house now. So, if you were to try to comply right now with these regulations, you would end up with a T of configuration. Even worse, once again, when you're there, you see the full picture. Even worse, it's just the way the interior layout of the house is now. So, what they're trying to accomplish is multi-generational aging in place. Ms. Robinowitz has her mom, she's in the car, so it's Ms. Robinowitz, her mother, and then the son and daughter-in-law eventually are looking to come down here, so they just change and take care of each other, and that's why they're trying to create all these generational living arrangements. But the reality is, you have to, you have to work with the configuration of the house that you have, because you don't want to end up with something that's architecturally non-conforming or incompatible, and we have the project architect here. But it's also the utilities and the way it's laid out now. If you push the 20 feet in, you end up with one of the, dead center one of the entryways, and one of the rooms lining up with the kitchen that shouldn't be lined up with the kitchen. That's why it was designed the way it was. And, and due to mistakes, and everybody's part, there's been $150,000 worth of windows purchased, the whole roofs, trusses, and structures, and everything's been purchased. It is what it is, this is where we're at. I will say for the client's perspective, the minute they, they received the cease and desist order, they stopped, there's been no further construction. In fact, the pictures show that the tie-vacs, nothing's been touched, because we wanted to make sure that we're coming before the board in good faith to try to attain this variance. So, why do we believe this is appropriate? First of all, I would contend in getting into the burdens, number one, we do have uniqueness of this property in that the building envelope itself was already constrained to begin with. If you look at the lot width, the lot area ratio, even not taking into consideration the increased setbacks, the increased setbacks just reduce this building envelope down, like I said, it's just a centered T down the middle of the house. Number two, it's just the way the house is now physically placed on the property. The house goes from 20 feet up to where the garage is, to the, oriented to the side, then the driveway configuration, and out to the barn. It's just the way the property was developed in accordance with prior dimensional criteria. Then is the interior layout, I'm talking about room usage, the utilities, the infrastructure of interior, it would just be so haphazard now. Once again, the architect can add a little bit more flavor to that, but I hope the pictures show what I'm trying to explain. And then I got to the point where, okay, so I really feel comfortable that we can prove, in fact, that there's the presence of true hardship associated with this property, and obviously, none of these things were the result of this property owner, but I do know that a neighbor did an inquiry, so the only neighbor that would be in close proximity to this, I concentrated most of my energy there. This property is unique from the following perspective. There's, and this was the architect's terms, and I like it, so I'm stealing it, I put it in my report too, it does look like a camel's back. There's a crest of a hill that stands right between just these two sole residences, and it's approximately six feet in height. I know that, A, anecdotally, because I sat at the bottom and it's in the pictures, but more importantly, we had the topography added to the plans. So, we're talking slope 106 down to 100, that hill alone. Then the land slopes to the south, this is a one-story addition, we're talking to the rear, if you want to show this, it's a one-story addition. Their sandwich closer, so the angle of view, when you're standing there, is an upward trajectory. There's a picture in my report that exemplified all of this, and it was on page, it's on page 15 of 18. If you look at that top illustration, that's me standing at the crest of the hill. So, on my level with the roofline of the adjacent house, at the roofline, and I'm on the top of the crest of the hill, and as you can see, you can almost, it's very, it's not very visible, but the point is the trajectory is in upwards, and then when you go below, you see nothing. And this is a one-story addition. So, I really believe there is true physical hardship associated with this property in regards to both land and structure. These are not the actions of this owner. I don't believe we're going to impact the character of this neighborhood based on the unique topography and conditions that are existing. And once again, we are talking about a singular variance, and the threshold is a mere inconvenience. What it would take to rectify this now, I think goes well beyond a mere inconvenience to realize a permissible land use.
And this, this photograph on page 14, this is the, before the addition, right?
Correct. So, what I did was, page 14 to 15, I stood on the crest of the hill, looking downward to where the addition would be, that's that seven to nine-foot difference, because the existing house is that slope 100 to 106, so that'd be about another two, three feet, sloping down at the one-story addition.
Yep.
And then I turned around and took a picture from the crest of the hill to the neighbors, and that's on page 15.
So, but that wall I'm seeing there, that wall isn't the finished house, it's still going to come.
This is the existing house.
That's the existing house.
What happened was we started to strip.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they were going to match the light architecture, and then we ceased.
So, how much farther is the house coming out?
I'm going, I'm going to let, I'll let the architect.
Okay.
Speak to the specifics, I don't want to throw the wrong numbers out.
Okay. Board members, questions for Mr. Pimentel? I mean, assuming you're done, I'm sorry.
I am done, I'm available after, if anybody has questions.
Does anybody have questions on the board of this witness?
Thank you.
Not yet, thank you, sir.
Just give me one second.
Do you want to ask if there were questions?
Only from the board. I'll open it up to the audience, to the folks, if that's all right. David Graham, please.
Hello, David Graham.
Graham, Mr. Graham, do you swear to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the whole truth.
Excellent, so step up to the mic and just state and spell your name, please.
Yeah, I'm David Graham, G R A H A M, architect.
Okay, great, so go ahead, tell us what you guys like to do.
Why don't we qualify, so as, as I mentioned, and you can have some more questions of Mr. Graham, but he is a registered architect in the state of Rhode Island, he's registered in the state of Connecticut, he's registered in the state of New York. You haven't appeared before any boards in Rhode Island, have you?
No, I've done, I'm working on something in Block Island right now, you know, we've done other projects in the past, I went to RISD, so it's like old home.
Yeah, just talking to the mic.
Yeah, yeah, David, oh, yeah, so I've had some, we're on another project in Block Island right now.
Have you, have you?
No, I've been in front of the, I've.
Have you been in front of any other municipal boards in Connecticut, New York?
Well, New York, hundreds, but in Rhode Island, all the projects we work on have been by right and haven't required variances to date.
Okay.
I would request that you accept Mr. Graham as an expert architect.
Yes, Mr. Graham certainly being certified in several states, and being a RISD grad. No, certainly can recognize you as an, as a expert in your field.
And I'm familiar with the client because I did in 91, a similar family compound, you know, for the family, because they, they grew up overseas, dad and mom had been in, in Japan, and so when they returned, they bought this great old house in Armoc, New York, and I helped them with that, and I was thrilled when they gave me a call and said, we're ready, we're doing it again, but we're moving to Rhode Island, so here I am.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
David, when, when were you first introduced to this particular property?
I got a call in 2021, they had just bought the property and they asked me to come out and size things up, you know, so that's when I got started.
What were the scope of the services that?
Well, I, I'm hired to, you know, just help them organize their, their needs, their program, and then we come up with different designs, we looked at different places that the addition could sit on the property. We pick the most successful design, and then we do construction drawings, and then we help them get bids from contractors, select the contractor, sign them up with the contract, and now we just got started, you know, being part of the team when they build it.
What are the factors that you look at when you design a property like that?
Well, in this particular case, we first looked at where things would, first of all, the reason they bought the house was that Janice, the mom, is in her mid-90s, and they needed to have a house that had a bedroom on the first floor, so they found this great place that had that, and there's a bedroom existing on the first floor over on the left-hand side. So, I came on board and congratulated them on that find, and then we figured out where, you know, the missing parts, which was a, an elderly bathroom for mom, and she also, because it's kind of a cohabitate house, wanted to kind of have her own, call it, I call it a city room, but kind of a little, a little small living room to have some element of autonomy. And so, the most obvious thing to do would be to add a budding, you know, adjacent to the existing bedroom, which is what we've done in this design. We did look at the idea, on the right side, there's a driveway and an existing garage, and we considered sort of flipping things, but that driveway also services a detached garage, and also, we talked about it, that if we flipped it, then you would just have to bring the driveway closer to the neighbor on the left with all of that noise and, you know, what have you. So, we thought leaving the driveway where it was made the most sense. Then we looked at doing things in the front and the back, you know, taking that bathroom and that sitting room, but because they're private, when we're placing those facilities in front of a public room, it blocked off the windows and it created a problem. So, the current plan has the, you know, a dining room and a family room, rooms that the, that the kitchen can look through, rather than an introverted bathroom, you know, and a private kind of living room, sitting room. So, we reaffirmed the idea of adding those amenities, abutting, you know, the existing bedroom that we wanted to reuse made the most sense, and that's how we, you know, we kind of developed the plan, that logic. At that time, the idea of adding on in a way where we didn't increase, go any closer to the side yard, we maintained the setback, and we had the benefit at that time that the setback was 20 feet, so it also didn't require a variance. But when this came up, I did look at it, there are a couple of mitigating factors, we have, for the configuration I've done, we have bought, you know, we put a deposit down on, on a significant amount on roofing, and we have a couple hundred thousand dollars with the windows in a warehouse now that are, you know, sized to the addition we did, so that's, you know, a little bit of a dilemma. But we, we did look at other locations, and we, and I revisited it, looking at it when this issue came up, and in my opinion, you know, this is really the best way to go. My thinking was, is that when, if this quiet, private bedroom is tucked over on the left where it is, where it sits at the bottom of a hill, where there is existing mature planting, we made the addition where we didn't add any windows to the side yard to maintain privacy, and we're also planning on putting like a hedge along it. The addition on the rear is only one story, I did a hip roof to keep a lower, more modest profile, and, you know, that's, that was, so we, we put a lot of thought into it, you know, and we did consider, you know, other arrangements, but we really think that this is the only smart way to do it.
So, help me understand the, the existing building, I'm looking at the first floor plan here, and.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah.
Here's a view, I'm not waving the mic, but this is a sketch showing here, this is the existing house now, and in the front, it is a little bit less of an issue for everybody because it's kind of in a, you know, a more remote area, that's two stories.
Yeah. So, well, just, I mean, just name some of the rooms on here, that might, that might help me more. So, the porch, this porch is existing?
There's an existing porch there now that we're going to expand. We're going to move it over.
You have to speak over the mic.
Okay, yeah, speak over there, so, no, it's all right, I can, so.
We're building, we're building the bathroom and an expanded porch over the footprint of the existing front porch, but the existing front porch right now goes all the way to the side yard, that's in question. So, part of the footprint of the new building on that side, which now needs a variance, was previously occupied by a front porch.
Is there, I mean, is there a sketch in here that has the existing footprint?
My, yeah, my floor.
Well, I guess my, my point is, is so, the building is already 20 feet from the property line, or you're building it to the property, or building it to that 20 feet?
It's already at, it's already at 20.
20.7.
20.7, right, correct.
20.7.
It's a little offset from the 20 right now.
Yeah, this is the footprint, this is here, so it came out like six or seven feet, and it went along the front, and we're replacing that with a larger porch over here, and this is, you know, this was the bedroom we inherited in the house, and this is mom's bathroom, and that's her sitting room, you know, adjacent to.
Okay, so, so on this first floor plan where it says bedroom one, that bedroom one is existing, and, right, so that side of that house where there are those two windows on, I don't know which elevation I'm on here, but it's on the southwest, southwest, or wait, northeast, sorry, northeast side, okay. So, where you wrote existing on the side margin here of the first floor plan, that is in fact where the wall is. So, your, your addition isn't getting any closer to the sideline than the building is right now?
We're aligning it with the existing building, we're not, we're not increasing the nonconformity.
So, you're going back, essentially back towards the, you're going ahead a little bit to close in that porch, but you're not coming any closer.
Correct.
And then the behind bedroom one, you're adding a sitting room.
Yes.
Okay, and that's where you said you're not putting any windows into that.
On the, on the neighbor to the left. On the neighbor to the left side.
Okay.
There are no windows. On both the bathrooms, we put no windows.
Okay, and then what hap, and then you're also going back on a lot of other, the addition two? Or is the building expanding that way? Or are you just sort of going a little bit to the left? Only, only because the graying out of the plan, it's hard to tell what's what?
Everything here back is, this is all new. Yeah, this is all new. Yep.
Okay, so behind the, so we can see behind bedroom one, living room, kitchen. All of that behind there is being added. So the sitting room, dining room, all those things, great rooms, all those things going back.
Yep.
Got it. So really, it's that sitting room that's the, being built out to the existing line?
That aligns with the existing building.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Maybe we should add, put these in the record. I don't know if we have copies of these in that, in the record.
I don't know if they're that, if, if, if we can see them like that, but I, I don't know. Okay, so we, we have them.
This is just. Yeah, I didn't submit the sketch though.
Board members, do you have questions of the architect at this time? Not yet, okay. So is there anyone else that you want to, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Graham.
We'll remain available for you to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. George, I understand you guys, is there anyone out there who wants to speak on behalf of this application? Yep, there's a couple folks out there perhaps that want to speak besides you guys, but you can come up. Let's hear it.
I am here for moral support. Holly and Mike are my friends.
Okay, great. So let's, let's get your guys' names, full name and state it.
Michael.
Sorry.
Michael Bonnecoue, B-O-N-T-E-C-O-U, wife is Holly.
Okay, and Mr. George?
I'm Ernest George, G-E-O-R-G-E.
And you guys both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So you guys want to offer some support?
Yes. I do have a question for the architect. What?
Please.
If you don't mind me asking.
No, no.
The existing living space square footage. Do you have that?
Yep, hang on a sec. We'll, we'll ask him.
Oh, okay. I can be friendly.
I know.
Questions through the chair, please. We're not going to do the back and forth.
Yeah, you guys don't have to answer, like, we'll, we'll, we'll ask it, but we'll, so how many square feet?
And the, I'm looking for the percentage increase in square footage of the building. I have a plan here that I marked up and maybe I could show you and you tell me if I'm wrong. But this is really the existing building.
Can you please ask the question through, through the board?
Yeah, just ask through us.
I just wanted to show you the picture.
Yep.
That these are, the red is the existing building. These are the additions, the black, yellow here.
Correct.
This is the property line.
Yes, yep.
I think what the applicant is asking, that it is an R-80 zone. And they're asking for, for you, the board, to grant the least variance possible where they could still maintain the use. They have a very competent architect that could certainly take a second look at this. Instead of being 40 feet, perhaps be 30 feet and reconfigure the interior of the structure.
Okay, it's not pickup, okay. So Mr. George is mentioning that the sunroom, or sitting room, excuse me, can be cut back to, to the 10 feet, to request only 10 feet, not 20 feet?
I would just remind the board, least relief necessary is no longer part of the analysis. So I, I think the applicant and the applicant's consultant can, they have already offered, I think, in Mr. Pimentel's written report, an analysis of whether it meets the standards. But to the extent that Mr. George is asking about least relief necessary, it's no longer relevant.
Okay.
So you're telling me that the, the board doesn't, isn't required to grant the least variance necessary?
Not after the general assembly eliminated that from the standards.
Okay. Well, you still believe that the addition, you can see in red there, the existing building.
Yep.
The footprint is, in the living space, is increasing at least 150% of what's existing. And the number of bedrooms is increased. I don't know what they are. But it looks like the setback in those black additions near the property line, both where the yellow is on the plan, the sitting room, I think that is, and the bathroom behind there could be moved back somewhat and to, so that it's not as close to the property line. Just because the building is 20 feet from the property line, I don't think it means that they have the right to be 40, to have the rest of the building, no matter what they add to it, and not meet the setback. And still, you know, have that 20-foot setback. I think if there's a reasonable way to reconstruct the addition or to redesign the addition, which Mr. Graham I'm sure can do, move some walls or change the amount of living space in the sitting room or something, where it's not as close to the property line. Mr. Bonnecoue's house, it's about 36 feet from the property line. He's close to the 40 feet. He wasn't, he's not at the 40 feet. But maintaining a reasonable distance and being reasonable with the plans, I mean, it's a substantial plan. The architect has put a lot of time into this, and he's had a lot of time since the last meeting to maybe look at reconstructing or redesigning the layout. And maybe be some 10 feet further away. Just because they're 20 feet from the property line, I don't think is a good reason for them. And there's so much. Garage has to be 12 feet wide if you have to be close to the property line for that. You know, you have to have a minimum width for a garage to use it. But in this case, it's not a garage. It's livable space inside the building. Did I say what?
Yeah.
Pretty much, better than I would have said.
Can we, can we enter this as opposition one?
As long as the applicant agrees that that's the living.
That's accurate to it. So you don't mind us taking this?
No, no, no.
Yep. Okay, did you want to add anything else?
We've been trying to work with her over the time just to see if we could come up with an alternative plan, and it wasn't happening. So when this came about, we thought we'd have a shot at least getting something said on our behalf.
So, so you, were you aware that, that it used to be 20 feet, the setback for that property?
We only knew that when we discovered it at the time.
Right, right.
When the cease and desist was ordered.
Right, so, okay, so if you, so if it still was 20 feet, but you would, you would still think it was, you would think it's too close? If that were the allowed setback?
We're looking for some relief just because it would be a, a big expanse of a, it's a big addition. This is not like a deck or, or even a garage, as he was talking about. It's, it's a 6,000 square foot plus house. It's big.
Right.
So any relief we could get would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. But before you get, is, board members, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bonnecoue. Bonnecoue, thank you for.
No problem.
Helping me out there. What is your objection? Tell me what your objection is, because I don't understand what it is other than 20 feet versus 40 feet. What is your objection?
Well, I think that would, it's a huge addition on both ends of this existing structure.
But how does it affect you? That's what I'm asking. Tell me how it affects you as an a butter.
It's, it's a, it's a big wall of a house, I guess. I mean, within proximity. It would affect anybody who lives next to somebody that builds a giant house, I guess.
If you look at that plan, it's not just one.
Excuse me, Mr. George, let me, let me finish with this.
I was going to try to explain.
Thank you, thank you very much. The view, you objected to?
No, I understand that's not an issue.
Okay.
I mean, it can't be an issue.
No, it can't.
I'm not going to say that.
No, it can't. Okay. Okay, so it's a big house and you feel it just shouldn't be approved for the variance?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it could be reconfigured so it wouldn't be as close to the, you know, our property line.
Okay, so just clarify this for me. You're concerned about this setback right here or your, or this setback? Which, which one?
Well, we've actually offered, you know, I would be willing, we, Holly and I would be willing, the yellow that you have there is, I believe, going to be a sitting room of some kind.
Yeah, but so, so, so you would like this shortened up this way or this way?
No, going in, in towards the structure, so.
This way?
Yeah, that, can I come show you?
Going that way? Show me.
Going this way. We're, we're here.
Okay. I see. Okay, but you still have the existing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing.
Wall, structure there, correct?
That's true. The original structure is there, yeah.
Right. So this is extending it, but it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's evening it up, if you would, but it's not extending it. Is that correct, from the existing line?
You're expanding the existing structure, which is in red on either side, either end.
Yeah.
Tripling the size of the, of the structure roughly.
Okay. Good, Mr. George, good. Come on up.
No, come up to the mic and just.
Yeah, on that plan that you have, Tom, the wall length in red is what's existing. The wall length on the top of the red line, on the, near the property line, and on the bottom is going to, is the expansion they're asking for. So both sides of that red are going to be within 20 feet of the property lines, what they're proposing. And the Bonnicues are asking to minimize that distance so that only that red portion stays 20 feet. And to bring it back somewhat, since there's so much living space in that house that's being reconstructed, it should be a way to do that so that you don't, that whole solid wall at 20 feet doesn't exist. I think that's what the gist of this is.
Ms. X?
Mr. Bonnecoue, are you the next door neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, and how many feet from the property line is your house?
I think about 36. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, which gives you, with the existing structure, forgetting about the additions, so 36 and then 20, so your house is 56 feet away from the existing structure?
I would assume close to that, yeah.
Okay, and my other question, Mr. George, are you in a butter as well?
No, I'm a friend.
A friend, okay. I was trying to figure out who was in a butter. Thank you.
Sorry, is that, is that all you wanted to say for now? We'll, we'll ask the architect the questions of.
Thank you for your attention to this.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Graham.
There's a powder room, you know, that's, I think, like a 13-foot sitting room. It's not, if you, if you slid that over 20 feet, it would no longer, you know, oh, you know, it, it's not connected to the, to the bedroom, you know, the mom's bedroom. It, it, it would, it would just be another room in the house that you walk to. You know, and the same thing would happen, you know, on, on, on the, on the bathroom in the front. It would disconnect, you know, it would, the contiguous plan would no longer exist. So it wouldn't be just a matter of moving something over a couple of feet, you know, and reusing all the windows that we have in a warehouse. It would, it would have a domino effect of having to, you know, reconsider the plan in a way that would diminish, you know, its effectiveness for my client. You know, and it would, it would compromise, you know, having an en suite bathroom for, you know, the 95-year-old mom, which is, we thought was an important amenity to have.
So in that, in that existing plan, there's a bathroom that services that bedroom?
Yes.
Inside the house?
That's mom's, that's mom's bathroom.
Okay, and that?
It's going to have grab bars and, you know, those kind of things.
And you're going to make that more into a general house bathroom, right?
The new bathroom in the front of the house is for the, the mom, the grandmother. And, and the sitting room in the back is for her. So if you move the, you know, if the rooms are 13 feet wide and you take the abutting rooms and you move them, you know, over 10, you, you have a powder room there that, you know, makes it impossible to connect them.
And you're, you're not having any entrances on that side of the building, right?
No, no, this is not like an accessory. This is for part of the family, you know, it's just the first floor for an elder bedroom and a bath.
And, okay. And do you know?
Because right now, the existing building on the right side is 45 feet. So there's only five feet of shifting, if you will. So if you start shifting things over 10 feet, what we might even have to do in a much, you know, really an awful plan, would be to start stacking rooms to the backyard. So right now, what we did, we tried to plan this where it was one story, you know, modest with no windows, you know, taking advantage of the drop in the topography, putting a hip roof on. You know, and the other thing is, is that this wing, if you will, also tends to block the deck where the noise would be. You know, that, that wing on that side, on the private function, you know, sort of isolates from the neighbor to the left, the, you know, the, the noisier activity of the deck where, you know.
Are, are you getting, are you at all getting close to your maximum sort of footprint for, for that lot? In, in terms of the building size?
No, that was part of the argument. The massing and scale that could be proposed on this house is tremendous. So that wasn't the intent.
Right.
The intent was to work with the existing positioning of the existing house, which was compliant at one time with the regulations, and things changed. So we're working with what I believe is actual presence of true hardship, which were no, no actions of the property owner. The positioning of the existing house, the interior of the house, yeah, we could build something architecturally non-compatible with much greater massing and scale going up two stories that would create a monstrosity in the neighborhood and have greater impact. That's why we kept everything level and down, because we knew we were at the 20-foot setback point. But that's something we have to deal with now.
So, but you, I mean, you could, you're not close to your maximum footprint?
We haven't maxed out on building coverages or anything like that.
Right, so you could build a, build a, build a bigger building than you are now. And if, you know, if you followed setbacks.
Correct.
You could put more space on that lot.
Correct, so if you, if you look on page 12 of 18, that's the most current survey plan. I did my best to blow it up. But you'll see the configuration of the building envelope. See the, see the building envelope, the square within the square?
Mm-hmm.
We could fill that all the way back. And if you go back to, with the assistance of the project architect, if you go back to page eight of 18, it shows you where the dividing line would be to comply with the 40. Because it becomes, this becomes, right, 10 feet, 8 feet, 12 feet, who's to say what, right? Because there is no least relief. So it's either compatibility, or what's the hardship and how do you mitigate the hardship? So the 40-foot line, which is create a big jog all the way back, I, I don't know. We kept it, like I said, we kept it low below the crest of the hill, so it's not visible. So you don't look like a one solid wall going down the property, so it isn't visible and look like that. But yet it works with the existing conditions of the property as we now have to deal with.
And is, is there a deck coming all the way out to the edge of that south or north side, northeast side?
Yeah, once again, I'll, I'll refer to the architect for specific. But what I did was, on page 13 of 18, I know it's difficult to read, that is the full gamut and early I just did was existing, but I'll let the architect.
Is, is there a deck going all the way over to the addition, all the way over to that, that side we're asking for the easement? Okay, so that's covering the whole back of the house?
Yeah, the, you know, just you were asking about proportionality there, you're allowed 20% lot coverage, and we're doing 5.95.
With the addition and everything?
So we're, we're like using. With the addition. So we're, we're like using one quarter of the potential development potential.
Thank you.
We're not anywhere near the maximum.
But that back of the building, the whole back essentially, is a deck, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Did you want to add anything else?
No. We have, any more questions? We have nothing else to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from folks in the audience? Okay, um, do we have any thoughts? Does anyone want to start out with thoughts? Mr. Rosen, please, go ahead.
Uh, just answer me one question.
The applicant?
Are you going any closer to Mr. Bonniqué's house?
No. No.
Right. Can, second question. Can Mr. Bonniqué see any of the house from his property?
I, I can only offer.
I was out there. I saw that there was a hill there, and it looked like the house is below the hill on the left-hand side, right? But I don't know how far that hill goes back, because I didn't, I didn't go to the backyard.
I, I can only tell the board, obviously, because I can't trespass on other people's property. I stood on the crest of that hill and took photographs of what I would see from the crest of the hill, looking to the, um, the abutting property owner's residence, back towards existing, and then down to where the addition was, which was about seven to nine feet lower.
And the addition that's going off the back of the house?
Correct.
Is going to have the same height as the front of the house?
No. No, because.
It isn't?
It will not, because the topography slopes.
Not the hill, the house itself.
Correct. But outside of the hill, the land itself slopes.
The addition is two stories.
It's gonna be two stories.
The addition is one story.
The, the front addition will be two stories. What we're talking about, the rear, what we've been talking about, is one story. And even from the, the top of the hill is at slope 106, based on the topography on the, on the, on the plan. The house, as it stands now, is at slope 100, so it's six feet lower.
I understand that.
The addition even, because the topography slopes even further in a southerly direction, is going to drop another foot to four feet as it slopes down.
Okay. Yeah, I got that from your report, yes. I still don't understand if the backs, the addition that you're adding to the back of the house.
Yes.
That's going to be the same height as the front of the house?
No. Because the, the front of the house is, is at a higher slope. The existing house is at a higher slope.
The actual structure itself.
Correct.
Off the back of the house and the roof that's going to be over that, are those two roofs in?
I think we need.
The same?
Existing? No.
Oh, that's going to be lower?
It's, it's, yeah, it's much.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's what I didn't understand. Okay.
Can we get? Can we get a copy of that rendering by chance? Well, thank you very much. Yes, please. You can, you can give it to Jess. You have that. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Yeah, please, Mr. George. Come on up. Hand that to Jess. Come on up to the mic, just so we can get you.
It's one story in the, um, in the yellow portion of the plan that I showed you in that direction. But in the other direction, in black, where the bathroom's going, that's a two-story portion, I believe.
In the front. The front is two-story? Okay.
That, that part's two-story, not one-story.
Okay. That makes sense.
Let me just ask it again. The existing house is two-story, is that what you're saying?
Existing house is two stories. The addition to the front will be two stories. The addition to the back will be one story.
Okay.
Along the property.
Right. Any other questions, board members of?
Questions?
No, okay. Uh, do you want to start off? Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All due respect to the butters. I see no reason to deny this application. I did not hear enough testimony that convinces me that, uh, there is good cause to reject the application. I think it's certainly in a context of the community, comprehensive community plan. And, um, the fact that the building is big, it's big. For me, that does not rise to the level of denying this application. I would approve.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Ms. Hicks, do you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, my only, um, comment is that the question in front of us today is whether to grant a dimensional variance for one side. We're not actually being asked to judge the size of the project or whether it's one story or two stories. We have heard that the finished project, if it's built as we see it here, will still be within what's allowed for that size lot. So I think our only question to consider is whether to grant the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Uh, Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, I, I agree with both, um, Mr. Daniels and Mr. Hicks. I just go back to the thought that, um, when they first got started with this, they could have built that addition onto the house and anything they wanted, because the setback was already twen- was 20 feet. And the only reason that they're here tonight is because the General Assembly changed things in the middle of what they were doing. And I sympathize with them that they had to go through all of this stuff and spend a lot more money, I might add, simply because, uh, the General Assembly changed the formula. So, uh, this is only a dimensional variance, uh, and that's all we're considering, and it seems like a reasonable proposition to me.
Uh, I agree with the other members. I think the addition really does work well with the existing position of the house. And when you look at it, it's like, what, 5.9% coverage? They really could have gone and made this a huge coverage of that lot. So I think when you look at what they've done, we're not here for design review. We're not here to tell them what size, you know, bedroom or bathrooms they should have. I think we're only here to look at the evidence on granting a variance, for which I think they've met the, the burden.
Okay. Um, I, I agree, uh, with my colleagues. Um, I also think that, you know, even when they were designing this, uh, without knowing that it was 40 feet, um, it wasn't as if they moved to the 20 feet. The building was already there. Um, I also thought, um, that, that they were being considerate, um, especially when you're having a, a room, um, a sunroom or, or a grate room, and you're not putting windows on one wall. Uh, you're, you're sort of limiting sort of how much you can, uh, use that space, uh, for, you know, uh, just to bring in more light and so forth. So I think, I think you're, you're, they're doing what they can to sort of minimize the, the impact on that, that elevation. So, um, so yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, so. You know, I, I, my only, my only thought, I think, was, was the fact that the deck does go all the way over to the edge. Um, but in the end, I, I, I don't believe that, 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 that distance is going to make a difference in terms of sound or, or, um, any other nuisance to the, based on topography and so forth, so. It seems like it's pretty reasonable. So, someone want to make a motion? Mr. Rosen, please.
Um, I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance of, oh, I gotta go down here to the bottom, Anne Rabinewitz Danzig, um, 962 Post Road, South, uh, Kingstown, Rhode Island, um, on, at, at tonight's meeting. Several individuals spoke before the, before the board, Attorney Resnick, uh, Mr. Ed Pimentel, uh, the architect, David Graham, and to, uh, the neighbor, Michael Bonniqué, and his friend, what's, something George. What's your first name?
Ernest.
Ernest. Yeah, I scribbled it down here. I can't read my own writing. Uh, the materials that were read into the record by the, the chairman are, uh, part of the record, and so I don't have to repeat them. As I said before, I move that the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant, excepting those physical disabilities addressed in 452430, paren 16. Uh, the only reason that the, um, Ms. Danzig is before us tonight is because she bought a house in, uh, 2021. The pandemic came in and, uh, as it did for a lot of other people, uh, messed everything up. And then the General Assembly stepped in and changed, uh, the, uh, formula for what she had to do. And she came forward with, uh, this simple, uh, change as, to seek a dimensional variance. And I think that, uh, we have to go along with that at this point. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, as I just stated. Uh, she was more, she could have done, uh, pretty much anything she wanted to do, because the house was already there. Uh, and the setback was correct, but, uh, things intervened, uh, in the course of, uh, trying to get through the, the pandemic. The board finds that the granting of the crested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or the purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Uh, because, uh, nothing much is going to change from actually seeing from the, from the roadway of Post Road. When, I, most of the, uh, construction is going to go off the back of the building. Uh, I was out there, and, uh, this house is pretty well set back from the road itself. And so the, the character of the, of the neighborhood shouldn't change very much. Uh, the neighbor off to the left-hand side, or which would be the north-hand side, has a, more or less a fairly, uh, high hill in between, uh, Ms. Danzig's property and his property. And, uh, there's, nothing much is going to change as far as the views and et cetera. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, which I've been told is not part of this, uh, stuff, but I'm going to read anyway. Meaning that relief sought is minimal, and in my, uh, thinking it is minimal to a reasonable employment of the permitted use, uh, to which the property is proposed to be devoted. And so I move approval of this petition.
Thank you. The motion is made by Mr. Rosen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Daniels. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. No. It's nice people like you that make it worth it, Mr. George. All right. So next, uh, we have Ms. Page. Petition of Shirley Page, 19 Wright Ave., South Kingstown, 02879, for a dimensional variance on the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct an accessory dwelling unit above the existing detached garage. The proposed building height will be 28 feet. The maximum height permitted is, for an accessory building, is 15 feet. Therefore, 13 feet of relief is requested. Lot size is .43 acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section 401. Schedule of dimensional regulations in section 907 are standards of relief. The owners of the property are Shirley Page and Nikolai Petkou, for premises located on 19 Wright Ave., South Kingstown, Assessor's Map 563, Lot 123, and is owned, uh, commercial downtown. Um, Shirley, come on up. And tell me how much I butchered Nick's last name. Did I?
A little bit.
I'm sorry.
It's Nick Petku.
Petku, I'm sorry.
Like Pet Co, but with a U.
I've never called you by your last name. Uh, spell, spell your name, please.
Uh, Shirley Page. It's, uh, S-H-I-R-L-E-Y-P-A-G-E, and Nikolai, N-I-C-U-L-A-E, Petku, P-E-T-C-U.
Excellent. And you guys swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. So tell us what you guys want to do. Sounds like you have an existing garage where you want to put on a floor on the second, the second floor.
That's correct. We want to put an accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit over the existing garage. A 900-square-foot apartment, one bedroom, one and a half bath, um, for Nick and I to reside in. And we own a three-family home there and on Wright Avenue. And we live on the first floor currently. The idea is, as we are both, uh, self-employed and have been for the better part of our life, to help ease the, um, the costs of owning that property and, um, be able to generate an apartment, a three-bedroom, a two-and-a-half-bath apartment for the community, and move into the smaller space. We don't need, two of us don't need 2,000 square feet.
And the, so it's an existing garage with an existing height, existing, is it existing ceiling and so forth?
It's nine feet currently in the garage, and to try and put a second floor, we would need a height variance.
So you can't have a six-foot second floor?
No. No, I would like to, because it's going to be a smaller space, the idea was to have aesthetically more headspace. Where the apartment that we're living in right now, I think the ceiling is a nine, maybe even 10 feet. And the apartments in older homes, and to go into a six-feet would be.
So, so your outside walls are going to be full height, and then it's going to go to the pitch of the roof after that?
That's correct. And we'll probably vault the ceilings on the inside.
And are you trying to match an existing pitch line for the roof of the garage, so it looks like anything else?
Not at all, because the, the, the house is, being a three-family, is very tall to be.
Very tall already.
We're not trying to match a roof line. We'll be, it'll be much, much lower than the existing roof line on the.
Which, which isn't uncommon for a house, your main house of that size, to have a carriage house anyway. That, that could be two and a half stories. So, but this is essentially a two-and-a-half-story with the, with the gable and so forth.
Correct. And, and we would, we'll use one of the garage bays as our entryway into that unit. So we'll be losing, uh, a garage bay and a three-car garage to accommodate us to access the, the apartment.
And, uh, no issues in terms of bringing in systems, plumbing, electrical?
We have water, sewer, and gas in the street. The idea would be to bring it in. We'll bring it along the property line, um, to our abutting neighbor, not to Smith Co., who is facing Main Street, but our abutting neighbor, Peter. We'll bring it along the, the wall there and, uh, bring it into the unit.
Okay. Sounds reasonable. Anybody else have any, uh, questions of the applicant, Ms. Hicks?
Quick question. Will you have enough parking if you add another apartment?
We have plenty of parking. If you look at the, um, if you look at the pictures on the screen, um, we have ample parking, off-street parking, yeah.
Mr. Rosen? Or Ms. Hicks, you all said? Okay, Mr. Rosen?
Um, the garage you're putting the ADU on, um, that's a three-car garage.
It's like three and a half.
It's three and a half.
Three bays and, and a half space that, that accommodated a heating system and an air, and, um, we have, um, split in that, in the garage. When Steve Smith built it, he built it with heat and air conditioning.
And you're using one of the bays to?
One of the bays, the furthest one away from the house will be our entryway into the apartment.
And there'll be steps to go up to the?
That's correct. Along the back wall, I believe, is how.
And is the ADU going to go the full?
And is the ADU going to go the full length of the garage?
No, it is not. It's going to go the, over the three bays, and over the half-part of the garage will be a deck, facing the house.
Okay.
So there'll be like French doors to a deck.
Just one comment. It's really a beautiful property.
Yes, it is.
But I didn't realize, I didn't realize there were three people, three families living in there.
Well, it was originally a single-family home, and on my understanding was it was built on the Larchwood Inn property and moved to that location, and then in addition was put on it. Over the years, it's been a single-family, a five-unit, and a three-unit, and now it's a three-unit again.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. One of the bays that you're going to turn into your entry, entry point, will that also be converted into a room as well for you to use?
It will be more like a basement. It will have probably the laundry in it, would be my guess, and like more like a mudroom, you know, so there'll be an area for laundry there and storage, because we won't have so much storage up in the, up in the upper area. We won't have any attic storage or anything up there. The idea is to keep, you know, use the ceiling height as much as possible up there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions, board members? No? Anything else to add, Shirley?
No, I don't think so. I think it'd be a nice addition. I think there'll be an opportunity to create another rental for the area, and certainly it will be a lot less for me to clean.
That's a good goal.
I'll say. Two-and-a-half bathrooms right now in the unit that I'm in, so I don't need two-and-a-half bathrooms to clean every, you know, once a week. So I think it'll be a lot easier on me.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you. Anyone out there want to speak on behalf of this petition, for or against? No? Okay. I think it's certainly reasonable. You know, I don't know if the town council is going to take this up in terms of accessory dwellings, changing their heights now that they can be used as an ADU, but were they considering a change in that at all?
The town is a bit behind on incorporating last year's changes to the state laws into our zoning ordinance. So for now, what's on the books as far as state law for ADUs is what governs. So if the council wants to tweak any of the regulations, they can do so, you know, within the limitations that the law allows, but they haven't, haven't done it yet.
But this seems incredibly reasonable. The property is the right size. They're taking an existing building and building it up. Certainly a size, you know, it's accessory building of either equal height or lesser height than of a Queen Anne like that isn't out of the ordinary. So I think it's very fitting. So. Anybody else? Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion? Go for it. Yeah, please, Ms. Hicks.
Okay. At the meeting held on June eighteenth, we heard the petition of Shirley Page of Nineteen Wright Avenue, South Kingstown. And Ms. Page was the only person to speak. All of the pertinent materials were entered into the record, and I'm going to make the motion that the board approve the request for a dimensional variance of thirteen feet in height. So the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristic of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant, excepting those physical disabilities addressed in forty-five, twenty-four, thirty, sixteen, because, well, as Ms. Page said, she wants to take an existing three-car garage and put an ADU above the three garage stalls, then reducing the garage to a two-stall garage with one stall being used as an entrance to the ADU. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. I think it's reasonable to make a smaller apartment if you're no longer interested in cleaning two-and-a-half bathrooms all the time. I get it. So they, the people currently living, Ms. Page and Mr., oh my.
Nick.
And Mr. Nick, yes, will move into the ADU and then have another property to rent out. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based, because the garage is already there. It's simply adding some height to the existing garage. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property if the dimensional variance is not granted amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. And again, because it seems perfectly reasonable to add an ADU for their use on top of the existing garage and then be able to rent out the existing apartment in the main house. And there are conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Second by Mr. Rosen. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Cagnetta? Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Good to see you. Okay. Lastly, but certainly not least, the petition of James Callahan, Eleven Caswell Street, South Kingstown, for a dimensional variance on the zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking to convert an existing business office building into a single-family dwelling. The CD zoning district prohibits dwellings units on the first floor. Therefore, relief of this provision is requested. Lot size is point-one-one acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section four-zero-two-D. Notes to schedule of dimensional regulations and sections nine-zero-seven are standards of relief. Owner of the property is Lee Seawon, for premises located Eleven Caswell, South Kingstown, Assessor's Map fifty-seven-dash-one, Lot eighty-five, and is owned CD. Good evening, Mr. Callahan.
Hello. Nice to see you all tonight. Mr. Chair, members of the board, James Callahan of Callahan. Eleven Caswell. Variance to allow residence on the first floor within the town district or zone. This property is right next to the Belmont Plaza, to the west. It's on Caswell Street, which is probably a street you drive down often but don't actually go down very often. It's one of those side streets. Caswell is perpendicular to Cherry Lane, which is parallel to Kingstown Road and surrounds the Belmont Shopping Plaza. Lee has owned this property for about forty years. She purchased it with her law partner and life partner, Peg Lawrence. They utilized the first floor of the structure for a law office for about twenty-five years. Unfortunately, Peg passed away about thirteen years ago, and Lee retired from the practice of law in two thousand and fifteen. At this point, Lee is looking to sell the property, and she'd like to sell it to a longtime family friend, Robert and Andrea D'Antonio, who are to my left as well. They're a young family. They have a one-year-old child. Lee is looking to kind of pay this forward so that this family can remain in South Kingstown at a reasonable home price in an excellent area with walkability to Old Mountain Field, Bowling Alley, downtown, ice cream, Belmont, everything you could possibly want. We think this is appropriate because even though this isn't the commercial downtown zone, it's not exactly on Main Street or abutting directly the shopping plaza. And as Rob and Andrea and Lee will tell you, there are no commercial properties on Caswell Street. They're all residential residences. And residential use is allowed in the CD zone. Just the prohibition of the first floor is the issue we're facing here. So that's why we're seeking relief. At this point, I'd like to ask Lee to come up and give us a little background on the property, when she bought it, and what the condition was when she purchased it.
I want to thank the volunteers and the paid employees of the town of South Kingstown for staying here tonight and listening to this, and saved the best and the sweetest for last, the easiest too.
Well, just state and spell your name, please.
Lee Seawon, L-I-S-E, last name I-W-O-N.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but it?
I do.
Excellent. So please.
So this is zoned mixed-use, and there are four houses on Caswell Street. They're all residential. It's commercial. I wanted to keep it commercial, but the pandemic happened and the whole world turned upside down. But Robert and Andrea, the parents of one-year-old Gemma, have been looking for a house for a long time, and housing is a big problem. And this has all been part of my philosophy of life, and Peg Lawrence has paid forward. So these two young parents, we need contractors and nurses in our town. They can't afford to live here, but these two people now can. On the, on the, on the bike path, too.
Yes. So do you know, does this get rid of that permanently? Like, so if they're asking for this dimensional change to say that it's a residence, a business can never move into it?
Well, it doesn't affect the range of permitted uses. They're asking for a variance to allow residential on the first floor. But I guess in theory, someone could still, it doesn't mean that it has to be. Commercial businesses, whatever businesses are permitted now will remain permitted.
Right.
Sounds easy.
You needed office space, probably.
Right.
Want to encourage businesses in the, you know, area, but some just isn't. And so this kind of request comes up elsewhere, not unfrequently, infrequently.
And Ms. Seawon, so this, this was a house that was used as a business?
The Flynn family raised nine kids in this house. Paul Mania was the, was the builder who changed it from residential to commercial. And when Peg and I first bought it, tons of people would walk into that building on a regular basis. You probably remember, from the URI days, some of the Flynn family, they'd come in and they'd say, oh, I had my first beer here. I smoked my first joint here. I got lucky for the first time here. You know, the Flynn family. This house is kind of a famous house in South Kingstown. Everybody knows the Flynn house, because when Peg and I first bought it, people would say, oh, it's the old Flynn house. I guess it has good bones and strong memories.
Yeah. So is there anything in it that, that makes it function as a commercial space?
There was. There were some commercial burglar alarms sprayed. We were grandfathered in, so we didn't have to spray for, we didn't have to have the water spray, but we had the direct hardwire to the fire department, but we don't need that now. So it's.
Okay. So there's no special equipment that makes it different? So basically, you're just changing the locks and moving?
Nope. Everything was all released by the fire marshal already.
Okay.
It's a nice old house with good bones.
Yeah. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Callahan, you want to add anything else?
And Rob and Andrea here, in case they want to say anything or you want any questions, but that's basically our presentation for the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hicks.
Is there anybody currently living on the second floor?
Actually, when we bought the building, we were subject to the commercial lease, and there were some people living in the building. There was a guy who was living on the first floor. It's really just a house. We took, the kitchen had been taken out, and there was a guy living in the kitchen. Nobody has lived there except us. I've spent more time there than I have in my house in Mattoonik, running a law office there. I can tell you that. Nobody lives there. But there were three guys who rented the upstairs space for a long time, who retired early, and they sold junk fish from Galilee. They ran a company for five years and made so much money that they retired at under forty, and the name of their company was named after them. It was called Raalbo Ray, Ralph, Bob, and Ray. And they sold junk fish. It was really funny. I'll tell you this. I don't even think Robert and Andrea know this story. It's an old house, so it's got this old, old stairway. And one day, Raalbo Ray was trying to move this humongous machine up the stairs, and I'm like, what are you guys doing? You're never going to get that machine up here. They're like, oh, Lee, it just cost twenty thousand dollars. It's going to save us so much money. We're going to be able to take a picture of the junk fish and send it to Japan, and they'll get it via the telephone line. It's called a faximile machine. That's a true story.
Did they ever get the fish out of the fax machine?
There was sometimes fish in the bathtub. We'd come in, there'd be ice, there'd be a fish in there.
So you still want this house after that story?
You should see what they've done with it. They love it. It's so adorable. They love it.
Excellent. Excellent. No, I'm very familiar with it. I live only around the corner, and so it's.
Where you live?
On Robinson. It's a, it's a blue house with round wood piles. So.
I love the way you pile your wood.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It wasn't me. I didn't invent it. It was the Germans. They're, they're much smarter.
I take pictures of it sometimes.
So, so I think it's a very reasonable request. It's certainly not changing anything. It's, still can be used if needed, if someone wanted it in the future as a commercial space, but it does sound like it started as a house, and it should be a house, fish or not. So is there anyone wants to, any discussion or motions? No issue. Okay. Someone want to make a motion, or do you?
Okay, Mr..
You want me? I will. It's fine. I don't think I have the right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's find the right sheet here. Meeting held today, the eighteenth of June, the Zoning Board of Appeals has considered the application of James M. Callahan, representing the owner of the property at Eleven Caswell Street, Ms. Lee Seawon. And this is a request to, to modify the, to grant actually a dimensional variance on the zoning ordinance. The application was read into the record by the chairman. The documents that have been associated with the application have been entered and identified. And it's the desire of the owner to convert what is formerly commercial space into residential accommodation for a lovely young couple going forward.
Parents of Gemma.
And Gemma. We won't forget Gemma. So the board finds, the board finds, the, two people, two people spoke at the, at the meeting, the owner, Lee Seawon, and attorney, Callahan. The board finds the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is not due to, is due, rather, to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, because this was a, looks like a house, looks like a residence, but was an office building. Testimony shows that the surrounding property is, is all residential, and there's no reason why the board should grant this application to declare this piece of property as, as residential. The board finds that the hardship is the result, is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, because they are waiting patiently for this approval so that they can begin living here on Caswell Street. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, once again, because if we look up and down Caswell Street, we find residences. So this is just another residence in a series of residences on that lovely downtown street. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, and therefore the, the relief sought is minimal. And with that, there are no conditions on this approval, and I would ask that the board grant the application.
Motion was made by Mr. Daniels. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hicks. Hicks, can I, any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Motion passes. Enjoy the home. Yeah.
When you put your head on your pillow tonight, you could say, I did something nice for a contractor and a nurse today.
Well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, guys.
So look forward to seeing you guys around town.
Robert grew up here. Andrea's from Lincoln.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Lincoln's like a whole nother place.
Oh, yeah. Gosh.
Those Northerners.
But keep your eyes open for Gemma D'Antonio. She's going to solve the world's true problem or something.
I hope.
She's a very wonderful kid.
We need it.
She'll make you laugh on point.
Perfect. Perfect. I look forward to hearing that.
I'm here so much. For your hard work.
Have a great, have a great night.
Thank you, babe. Gemma grew up here, didn't let us play hours.
Now it stirred a controversy. All right. So we have our meeting minutes. May 21st, thank you. Oh, there it is, right there, still in blue. May 21st, 2025. Any changes or to it? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next meeting? Everybody going to make it, as far as we know?
I believe so.
Okay. Excellent. Any other business that we have?
I'm just going to mention, I don't know if maybe our August meeting, it's scheduled for August 20th. And I know there might be issues with taking people back to college. I'm not, I will be coming back from New Hampshire on that day. I can make it, but if a quorum is available in the next week, Wednesday, the 27th, that would be better for me.
It'd be easier for you. I hate for you to, you don't want to drive back from wherever it is.
I would, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So from August 20th to the 27th? All right. Well, we can certainly address it again if someone has an issue with it, but it sounds like that should be okay. At least all of us will be here.
So wait, July 16th and August 27th?
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Quick question. Number four, dimensional variance.
Let me, let me clarify that. You have the correct template. So what I was mentioning with the post-road application to Mr. George was, I can kind of tell, you know, he was getting it, well, can they live with less? I thought, maybe I misinterpreted, but remember, least relief necessary used to be a separate standard that was on the template. It's not on your template anymore because it's no longer in the law. So the last sentence, the last standard that you read is the correct standard for dimensional variances. So the word minimal is still in there, but personally, I think the focus should more be on the word reasonable, because again, they wrote out least relief necessary. So in any dimensional variance application, the last standard that it has to satisfy is, is relief sought minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. And you'll probably hear on that, you know, focus on, I think the focus is more proper, properly on, is it reasonable?
So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you.